Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the June 11th meeting of the Oskaloosa School Board of Directors to order. First item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion and I have a second. Would you read the question?
Does the motion approve of the agenda?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item's welcome of visitors and public comment, and we have one or two visitors, so welcome. But I did receive no things about public comments, so we'll move right on to reports, communications, and announcements. So, we have a number of year-end reports in our packet, right? This time, which added plenty of pages for reading this time. Anybody have any comments or questions on our... Let's start with those year-end reports.
I was pleased to see that the high school is decreasing number of suspensions. So, what's been the magic wand this year?
Mr. Banks?
Mr. Banks?
Your magic wand?
The magic wand, okay.
I think the teachers did a really good job of kind of setting up and doing something we asked them to do. They were a lot more responsible for behavior in the classroom. I think they addressed some of those small readers, which kept getting the class longer. And I think our philosophy now is, we want kids in the building. So, we try to get creative with how we give them discipline, prepare them all, and keep them in classroom.
Just like it's working. So, I'm hoping teachers see that as well. Granted, bad habits are hard to break, but hopefully. To me, it was nice to see that change in demographics there.
I have a question. Are we going to come back to these reports at a later date, or are all my comments due tonight? Because I have enough for about two hours.
I think that we should revisit it. Carl, when we can come back.
Let's do it in one of those other meetings, I'll be gone.
There was a lot of good information in the report.
There is, and one of the things is on page three that I noticed in industrial technology is we have 1.71 in structures and physical education, we have 2.28. And I go, let me see, what kind of balance is that? Number of free and reduced-price lunches on page three is different than it is on page five.
That I did notice. I was gonna ask about that. The percentage was 37.6 on the page three, and then it showed 44 on page five.
Probably depended on the day the report was pulled.
That's what I wondered if that was just difference in days that reports were pulled.
I mean, there's a lot of information there.
So, do you think like a work session where we kind of go through and spend some time? Okay. So, how about any highlights, then? Any specific highlights that people had, or additional things we want somebody to follow up with? I may have had printing problems, because as I noticed, I had several pages missing when I must have hit print. But on the FAST bridge data for the middle school, on eighth grade math, I saw fall, winter, and no spring. Did I just miss a page, or does everybody else have that same thing?
If you... It's on the FAST report that Steph gave you.
It's on that, just not in this. Okay. Because I was like, there was no spring at the bottom of this page. Okay. I can get it off a different report, so.
Sorry, they were still taking it in that report. So, it's in the...
It's in that, but it just wasn't... Okay. It wasn't me missing a page out of my packet again.
Yeah, we still have five kids who are waiting to take it when that one was pulled.
Okay.
And then is the middle school report that was laying at my desk, or at the table tonight, is that the same as what was on?
Yes, it is. Mr. Scholes brought you that. Any changes in it since when you were...
No.
He just wanted you to have a nice fancy one, I guess.
Okay.
Who can I ask you about? So, just...
So, we think we could do... We'll do a work session with some of that, okay? Same with the assessment data?
So, with a 300-page document to go through, it's pretty hard to give it... The attention really deserves.
Could I ask one question on the FAST assessment things, too? Could you remind me what's the difference of CBM reading and A reading is when I'm looking at this?
CBM reading is accuracy and accuracy. A reading encompasses all five areas of reading, mainly at the level where we're taking a comprehension of vocabulary.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, if we're gonna move on, unless other people had questions, and we'll do a work session. I'm assuming that we would dig into the data, but again, if there's comments or questions people are asking, want to ask tonight, we certainly can. Library curriculum director report. And the action plans for the ESSA. I may have to get translations on a couple of those.
Every student succeeds that.
Yes, that part I knew, but when I was reading the document, I was like...
Oh, I know.
I need someone to simplify part of what that, so that would be good during our work session probably as well. Okay? Any other reports, communications? Do you have anything else? Nope. Okay. Well, if not, then we will move on to the next item, which is action items, board priority one, student achievement. Number ones, consider personnel contracts, resignations, and transfers, and we have a handful of those.
It is that time of year. Yep. We'll begin with contracts, and so you can see the list of contracts there. I don't know if you want to do them all together or individually.
Contracts individually, yeah.
Yep. Sharon Hamus is halftime OES music, which is just a one-year contract only.
She's coming back from retirement?
She's coming back for a year to help us out. Alexa Wallert, OES special ed. Mackenzie Paris, OES special ed. Nicole Stewart, OMS sixth grade ELA. Melanie Hatch, Director of Student Services. Angela Hansen, Director of Curriculum Instruction. Bart Elliott, OMS football. Andy Foose, OMS wrestling. And Justin Von Ossen, OMS wrestling.
Okay.
No additions.
So, we're gonna take them one at a time. First one would be Sharon Hamus at the halftime OES music for one year. Do I have a motion to approve?
I approve.
Okay? Okay. You can pick.
He was just a hair.
So, okay, I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
I had a comment on the second page. It said other significant information. Our selection team held two rounds of interviews and extended three offers. They were declined, and we would go back and we'd do it again, and then we'd figure out a solution to our situation, and I think that's what we want to do.
Okay. Very good. Okay. I have a motion and a second. Would you read the question?
Is moved to accept superintendent's recommendation of the appointment of Sharon Hamus as halftime elementary school music instructor for a one-year contract for the 2019-2020 school year at the MA plus 30 step 11 salary level of $30,590.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next one is Alexa Wallert, OES special education. Alexis here, and Alexa on here.
It's Alexa.
Oh. Sorry, it's Alexa.
Alexa Whaler. Did I say it wrong?
Whaler?
Whaler.
Whaler, okay. Thank you. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve her appointment to elementary special ed. Okay?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
She's a graduate of...
Okay. And she's been substituting within the district, it appears.
And a retain applicant.
Yep. Ten applicants, six interview. Okay. I have a motion and I have a second. Yes?
Yes.
Would you read the question?
Has moved to accept superintendent's recommendation of the appointment of Alexa Whaler as full-time elementary school special education teacher, starting with the 2019-2020 school year at the VA step one salary level of $37,535.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next item is Mackenzie Paris, also Oskaloosa Elementary Special Education. She is a mid-hire, right? We had her here. We hired her in January?
Yes.
Yeah? Okay.
I move.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Did I hear a second? Second down there from Amanda. Any other comments or questions? If not, please read the question.
Has moved to accept superintendent's recommendation of the appointment of Mackenzie Paris as full-time elementary school special education teacher, starting with the 2019-2019 2020 school year at the VA step one salary level of $37,535.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next one is for Nicole Stewart, Oskaloosa Middle School, sixth grade ELA, and social studies, right? I had to think what S has meant on the sheet, so... Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussions?
I only have a comment. I like this new plan. In teaching experience, I would like to have the years that they taught second grade and the years they taught first.
You mentioned that last meeting, I think, as well.
I think I was talking... Some might be that, but I think it was something different.
It was years, yeah. And we have... We're about halfway there. We have the inputs that they can put the years in, now we just need to get it to spit out on this form, so we're working through it.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you for reminding me, Shelley.
I think it's something like that you had brought up. Motion and a second. No other comments or questions. Please read the question.
Has moved to accept superintendent's recommendation of the appointment of Nicole Stewart as full-time at middle school classroom teacher, starting with the 2019-2020 school year at the VA step four salary level of $41,198.
Okay. The next item on here is Melanie...
We don't have a vote.
Oh, sorry. Whoa! See, I'm trying to keep this moving. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay? Moving on. Thanks for keeping me in order there, Chad.
She was looking for a silent one.
Melanie Hatch, Director of Student Services. So, do you want to visit about this? This is one of your hires?
We had 15 applicants, and you can see the list of committee members on the back that participated, and I'd like to thank all of them for taking time out of their end-of-year busyness to sit in and serve on that committee. We had a lot of great feedback on the candidates, a lot of discussion as to whether or not to keep it as Director of Student Services and Director of Curriculum, or whether to combine into a Director of Elementary Education, Director of Secondary. Ultimately, the committee recommended that we leave it the way it is, so a student services person and a curriculum person, and our recommendation is to offer the contract to Melanie Hatch for the pre-K-12 Director of Student Services.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Thank you. How about a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Yeah, I see Sharman served on the committee, I think, for the board. Okay? Okay? If not, would you read the question? I'll try to remember the votes.
Has moved to accept superintendent's recommendation of the appointment of Melanie Hatch as Director of Student Services, starting July 1, 2019, with a 260-day contract in the amount of $90,000.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed? Okay. Next item is Angela Hansen, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. We have a similar type of outline.
Process.
Same committee?
Candidates. Same committee, yeah. We did it all together. Not as many candidates that were in this position, but Angela did come to the top in the process. Her references had a lot of great things to say about her, and we did go further beyond just her listed references.
Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, please read the question. Oh, yes.
We're a guest. I won't support this either, and I think everyone knows my position, and I think our admin team should be recommending that we do that community. It's a great thing, I don't know how I deal about that, so I know the committee that will work, and I know that we're fully qualified, but that's my concern. So, we're not really different, that's just how we proceed.
I appreciate you explaining your viewpoint. We appreciate that.
Mrs. Reddick, I have a discussion as to what...
Can you require it? I mean legally, can you require it? I did not think so. Okay. Okay.
Word is with it.
Well, no, I'm not sure.
Angela lives in Ankeny, and I believe Melanie lives in Knoxville.
But maybe, they'll come to Oskaloosa.
Hopefully, yeah.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? If not, please read the question.
Has moved to accept superintendent's recommendation of the appointment of Angela Hansen as Director of Curriculum Instruction, starting July 1, 2019, with a 260-day contract in the amount of $90,000.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? And next, we have the coaching positions. The first one is Bart Elliott for middle school football coach.
I can point to coaches.
We can do all three coaches together. Okay. That sounds like a good point, okay, to me, if it does to the rest of the board.
Carl did have a question about why two middle school wrestling coaches if one was a head and one was an assistant, and the answer to that is no. They co-coach. We have two due to numbers, and so they're both considered... They work together, and that's the way it's been, I guess. This year, we hired a third because we had over 50 kids in middle school wrestling, but we're starting with just two. And the difference in pay is the experience of Mr. Foose as on step nine because of his previous coaching, and the other one, Justin, is this is his first year, so he's on step one.
Do I have a motion to approve the appointment of these three coaches?
I move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second from Amanda. Any other comments or questions? If not, would you read the question?
Has moved to accept superintendent's recommendations of the appointments of Bart Elliott as middle school football coach, Andy Foose as middle school wrestling coach, and Justin Von Ossen as middle school wrestling coach, starting with the 2019-2020 school year.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is resignations, and we can do those as a group, correct?
Correct.
I would like to point out, though, that a couple of them are late resignations after contracts have been turned back in and signed, and so those are pending suitable replacement. So, Shannon Nickel, first grade resignation is pending a suitable replacement, and Matt Johnson, OHS special ed, is pending suitable replacement.
Do I have to ask you?
I just don't...
Okay.
Yes. So, those two, if we can't find suitable replacement, they will be required to fulfill their contract, but we're working on that. Steph Wilson's curriculum director position and Joyce Evelyn's were handed in on time prior to their contracts being due, so...
Okay. Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments or questions?
We'll be looking to replace Joyce as...
We have an ad out, and we're looking, again, for just a part-time, hourly teacher to help with homeschool.
And I'm assuming Sharman's motion includes the pending suitable replacement.
It looks like it does from what I can see over here, so yes.
I heard. Well, I mean, I see it right here.
Very good. They work so well together.
Exactly.
Okay. If not, would you read the question?
Has moved to accept resignations of Joyce Evelyn, Shannon Nickel, Stephanie Wilson, and Matt Johnson effective immediately, pending suitable replacements if applicable.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving to transfers.
And as we were reviewing board policy, we realized that it does refer to transfers within the district to be approved by the board, and so we've added an item to the agenda that includes transfers, so we will include that every month if there are transfers. I would suggest that you just do this in one motion, but Deb DeYoung is transferring from OMS Technology to OMS FCS. Autumn Riester, did I say that right? Autumn Riester. From high school special ed to OES PE. Heather Van Gork from fourth grade to first grade. Molly Sterner from OES Language Arts to OHS Language Arts Tag. And then we are adding Bill Pester from OMS Math back to OMS Science, and Toni Biddle from OMS Special Ed to OMS Math. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, these are all internal transfers.
Okay.
So, were the administrators all good with that, those types of transfers?
Yes, they submitted their recommendation. Uh-oh, Mark's looking at me, like, finding it funky. Oh, he didn't mean to, okay.
He was just leaning over.
Okay.
Who was the last transfer you sent?
Toni Biddle. She is currently middle school special ed, and she's requesting the transfer to middle school math. Yes, the administrator fills out a transfer request paper and sends that in, so that's where they come from. It's a recommendation from the administrator.
Okay.
Are these all voluntary or...
Yes. And I can tell, if there's ever an involuntary one, I will point that out that there's an involuntary transfer, but... So, if it doesn't say anything, it's all voluntary.
Do you have any positions that you... I know you didn't eliminate any positions, but you were looking at some of that, or any of those positions you need replacing with the elementary?
We are working on special ed with rosters, and if we need to replace... So, yes, we're evaluating every single one. These positions specifically besides special ed, we already reduced the one fourth grade, so we will fill that fourth grade. We won't reduce two. Yeah. Okay, am I not understanding your question?
I was just... I know that you were looking at eliminating a position of elementary, and I didn't know if that was something that you were looking at for that, instead of hiring outside.
Correct. That has already taken place naturally.
Okay.
The one Title I teacher voluntarily decided to go part-time, which helps us... saved us in that area. And then we have the one fourth grade that voluntarily went to first grade a long time ago, so that helped us there. So, yeah, those both happen voluntarily, so there will not need to be an involuntary transfer anywhere. All worked out.
Okay.
So, is this something you want to do every month, is look at transfers, or would you rather I change policy that says the superintendent has the authority to do that?
I like knowing.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that had been a problem in the past, that things were being shuffled and the board didn't have a clue as to what...
You just want transparency to it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so I think I'm looking for a motion, right?
Correct.
We can do these all... Thank you. Do I have a second? A motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, please read the question.
Has moved to accept the transfers of Deb DeYoung, Autumn Riester, Bill Pester, Toni Biddle, Heather Van Gork, and Molly Sterner effective for the 2019-2020 school year as presented.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item is consider approval of the 2019-2020 parent-student handbooks. You want to chat about that briefly?
I'm gonna let the administrators answer any questions. I'm just looking at my packet, and I don't have the... I have the one without the handbook, so I have a copy in front of me. You want to start, Mr.... You want to start at high school or the elementary? What do you have first in your packet?
Elementary is the first in my bucket, so there we go.
Mr. Dersky.
So, obviously, the staff updates on the first page are a few things that we, you know, are still negotiating and still working themselves out there. Other than that, not really... Not really many changes from years previously.
Yeah, it looked like most was like the name of the new test that's given.
Yes, yes.
This verified excused absence section.
Yes, and that will be the same. We met as an A-team about that, so that'll be standard on all three, and we'll look through there.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Standard, and all the way through the same category.
I had a question related to page five. It talks about crisis plan information, lockdown procedures, and things like that. Shouldn't we be including the new security plan that we have had in place?
Well, there's a private part of the security plan and a public part, and so the public part would be as part of the handbook.
It will be.
It will be.
In the handbook before they're public.
So, Carl, I can answer that a little bit. Mr. Banks and Mr. Scholes and I met this week, and I think, guys chiming in here, the person that we're working with said that the public document would be 15, I think about 15 pages long, but our own plan would be somewhere between 50 and 60 pages long, and that it was critical that they not, or, you know, that there were parts of that that they not be aware of.
Right.
So, it would be part of this, part of the handbook. The 15 pages will be added to the appendix? Is that... I think that's what Carl's asking.
Yeah, when that...
Or if any of these things might need to change because of the plan.
Right.
And the plan for finishing that up is in this next month? Is that the... I think we're close?
We're really close.
Paul, we could do a few minor things, and then just take a few maps and remember that.
And we'll get that to you as soon as it's done, and we'll have a discussion about it in July.
I had a question on the same page under cellphone news, where it says, "Use of cellphones at school can seriously jeopardize the effectiveness of first responders." And I noticed that it's worded a little different in some of the other buildings, that during those crisis times, that cellphones can't be used, but that just made me think, what about teacher use or class apps? So, and I know this is maybe students, but then teachers are using their phones also.
So, another thing that we talked about and is listed on the new safety plan is the, you know, what we have within our own buildings. So, and within our own buildings, you know, we talk about like the PA or the intercom system, we talk about walkie-talkie use, the two-way communication. The cell phone is an option, but it's not number one or number two, and yeah, it's likely that teachers could receive exact directions at different times during an event as it happens. So, there may be an evacuation time, you know, while everybody's on foot and moving, that, no, we're not using that, but it may be when we get to a rally point or relocation that we do use, and so the people in charge or in command law enforcement would give direction at those point in time when we could or couldn't. And then they also shared that it's likely that the system would be flooded or inundated And then they also shared that it's likely that the system would be flooded or inundated with, so probably would not be inaccurate or wouldn't have much luck with communicating that way anyway. It's kind of like when Ragby comes to town, we have to bring in support, you know, for that, probably, probably similar to that.
Does that answer your question?
I had a question on page 14. And center, center column, towards the bottom, threats of violence. And about the third sentence says, "Law enforcement may be contacted and starts out threats of violence or symbolic against students, while visitors are prohibited." And it says, "Law enforcement may be contacted." I think it should be shall be contacted.
Well, I can let Mr. Durstky answer that as well, but it's, it's a gray area with little children saying, "I'm, I'm gonna, I hate you," or, "I'm gonna kill you." You know, the relevance is, well, this is the elementary handbook. So, I think that the, I personally believe that the administrator has the responsibility to make the determination whether it's a credible threat. Mr. Durstky?
I agree with that, yeah. Yeah, exactly.
You got to balance, you don't want police called for a plastic knife.
As long as this is thought about, I'm okay. Page 16, the last, the very last paragraph says, "If you reach to receive more information, please contact Mr. Andrew Hoop.
Yep, that needs to be changed.
But Carl, on that page two, it talks about calling rooms and how, how they're used. And I think that might be, we have a discussion at the work session.
Are there new rules and rates coming up with suppression?
Yes.
And so, that might need to be...
Yes.
...in a work with that?
They're more restrictive.
Right, so, but we, we need to just talk about that and our general thinking of policy of how to use and expectations of the students. I think the last clearing was talked about, so we just need to talk about that stuff. That's how I feel, I don't know how you guys feel.
I think my eye the most was the room, and not so much the wording of it, but more of the general policy type of thing, I think, kind of.
And it's been in the news a lot.
It certainly has been, but it was, I think it was a concern of every member of this board long before that. And, you know, I don't think that any one child has the right to interrupt the education of all the rest of the children. And if the other children in the room need to be evacuated from that room for their protection because this child is being dangerous, well, absolutely. But otherwise, I think it should be our policy, no, we eject the kid who's causing the problems and release disruption to the kids that are doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Right, and I think we need to discuss that at a work session and just say, this is where we want to go, or this is how we interpret, or we want this to be our board policy.
See, I think we said work session before, but when?
I've got a list going.
Well, whenever Paula decides she wants to have it. The same thing with Shelly.
Probably the second meeting in July, unless we don't want to have a second meeting in July.
Okay.
Maybe our meeting in July will be short and we could have a meeting in work.
That'd be my preference, but we'll get to that at the end of this meeting, so.
Yeah.
We've got a list going.
Okay, we're on page, we're on page, what, 17, 18?
I, and maybe this is something we can talk about at the work session, but I had some things highlighted in the, I know it's been talked about, the level behaviors. Mainly the major offenses. Do they really match the major consequences? Mainly drugs, paraphernalia, weapons, bombs, opposing ones of sexually inappropriate touching. Again, more in the elementary, so, but yet, major consequences, an offense of reteach or sexually inappropriate touching? You know, is that, does that really go? I would disagree.
Yeah, those are discussions that we can probably have at the work session and with administrators present to see what their take is.
So, we can increase the board's understanding about what and how? Okay. Other questions? Are we done with the elementary one? And...
I highlight them on page 20. Calling information may be released to the public about students. And I don't, I don't don't think of releasing my telephone number unless I release my telephone number. But I don't think the school ought to be releasing telephone numbers.
Didn't we redo that in the policy?
We did, we cut it way down.
Well, I thought so too.
Disfair, that has telephone in it.
The date and place of my birth is nobody's...
Yeah, we did, you're right, Carl, that's a good catch, so we'll highlight that because that did change. We cut that list way down.
I'll fold this page over so you can have that one. Okay?
Good catch, what page is that?
That was on page 20. That's the same place all that verified excused absence stuff is.
That might be the same in all handbooks, I'll have to check.
It's, by your turn, is this an actual item that we're going to approve or disapprove of these handbooks this evening?
Or you can take, recommend changes and then have it brought back.
Yeah, well...
Most of the time, handbooks take two readings.
What I was going to say is, is that, you know, I think that there is quite a few things that, as Craig suggested, a work session on these. I would move a table of approval on these until we have that work session because to go ahead and publish something, you know, this is what we believe.
And then change it, and then change it.
And we need to make our changes first and go approve them tonight is premature.
I agree.
I don't know what your July agenda looks like.
It's pretty slim right now.
We could do the work session ahead of the, ahead of the meeting and perhaps be able to move that. Because you, having the handbooks ready before kids are back to school would be ideal, obviously.
Yeah, I think that that would be, that would certainly be ideal and it should be, it's a worthy goal, but better to go with last year's handbook. Look at the, no, no, all right, these are the rules till the board makes up its mind and reaches an approval and then we have the new rules versus to approve something that obviously a lot of us have several issues with. So, anyway, that's why I moved the date.
No, I agree.
Okay. All right, so we'll move those to that. Is there anything else that you want to make sure we gather more information about before that with the ones that we do have?
What if we would pass our question into the administrators?
Yeah.
I've got a whole bunch of them.
Yeah, I agree.
That probably would be helpful to them, I suppose.
Until then, we know what's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Because there's a couple areas I'm sure we probably all...
I found a couple typo things, but that's little, little stuff.
Well, those are things to pass on.
So, the stuff that I'm sending out to every different administrator, should we send them to like Shelly or to somebody?
That's who I was going to say.
I could hear the headlight there for a little bit.
I don't think they want seven different emails from all those different buildings.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I think that'd be appropriate because we could be always asking the same question and it's just unfair to have to, and unterm workload.
Yeah, if you, if you want to send me any of your comments or questions, then I'll compile them and we'll make sure we're ready to discuss them at the July board meeting.
Okay. Well, that moves through quite a few more pages of our packet.
Sure did, cut your pages way down. So, are you in agreement that we're tabling this until next, till the July meeting?
Yeah, do we have to have a motion for that?
Nope.
Okay, done.
I just didn't want anybody to feel like they did want to vote and got left out to have the opportunity to say something.
We have to have a motion on the table before you can...
True.
Okay, so, then we are to the next item. I had to find my agenda because I went through so many pages of handbook to consider, I just lost it. Consider approval of the memorandum of understanding and contract regarding property.
So, thank you very much to Craig because he has done the legwork on this item. But he has been able to reach an agreement and a contract has been prepared to purchase lot number two of the Marge subdivision for the 1920 Building Trades Home. And you can see the contract is there and also the understanding, memo of understanding. The contract calls for a purchase price of $30,000, but it's also included in the memo of understanding that if the home sells for less than the break-even point, the cost of that lot will be renegotiated or discussed at that time. So, no funds will transfer hands until the home is sold and completed and we sit down with the sellers to renegotiate prior to, according to the contract, October 1 of 2020. So, it's my recommendation to approve the contract and the MOU for the Building Trades Home Lot Number Two in the Marge subdivision.
I'll move to approve that second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Do we have questions? I think there are probably a couple people that do, maybe? Nope?
I'm headed, what is the average cost of our building trade houses? You know, what is...
What is the average selling price? Or the cost?
Well...
Because we're talking break-even.
Yeah, so what we normally have done, we've been trying to sell the houses before, what is it, June 30th, before our books close? So, that's the hard thing is sometimes the expenses come in after that. So, most of the time, we've made a profit, a small profit. Would you agree, Carl?
Well, Chad made, made a sheet for the facilities committee about it and we made a small profit not accounting anything for the lot. So, nothing for the labor, nothing, just our costs, our hard costs.
Right. So...
But we never made more than $20,000.
Right.
Right, Chad?
Correct.
So, in this connect, in this case, if we made $20,000 on the sale of a house after all of our hard costs were in, we would sit down with them and renegotiate whether or not the laws, you know, pay $20,000 for the lot. Or maybe they donate some and it'd be only $10,000. But we would sit down and renegotiate with, with the profit that we had, knowing that we have to have some profit to dig the next hole and, you know, get going on the next house, but...
I'm sorry, I, I think it's important to note that Marge, Marge subdivision is owned by Musco and I think they're a great supporter of the community and the school and, and a donation and a reduction in price is whatever, whatever they would feel comfortable with. So, at least we have, at least we have a point that, that until the hard costs are determined, we don't have to pay for the lot, we don't have the exact price of the lot. I think Craig, Craig did a very nice job of negotiating this.
And I have got nothing but good vibes from Bob Musco on willingness to work with the district on the lot and willingness to go through this process. So, I have zero concerns about this, this contract or the understanding. It's, it's didn't have it in writing in case, you know, tragic happens, but...
But, but it should be noted that Carl and I and Eric and, well, the facilities team even before that, we've had, we've been having discussions on where to build three years ago. Because we knew we'd be out lots where we're at.
Are we out of lots now, currently or for a long part?
Yes. So, that's why we had, we were making those discussions and we've got some alternates, but we, we'd rather have a lot that we know is there, hard surface, not going to have to put in a lot of improvements.
And the reason, and the reason for the necessity of the contract is just protection of the school, protection of the subdivision, it's just good to have something written agreement.
Always good to have things written down and everybody on the same...
Right, exactly.
So, it sounds like the facilities committee's looked at this and are in agreement that you feel like this is a, a good thing to move forward with as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
While we're on the topic of this and what Craig just brought up about the timing of the sales and stuff, and we can discuss this further or not, maybe it's something that doesn't need, need discussed. But I think that because of the timing for the audit and stuff, that there's kind of an artificial deadline of trying to get the house sold before the house is really ready to go. And it's my opinion that, I know that my understanding of the auditing process doesn't like it when things don't all line up. But that in the real world, things don't always line up, that's not how timing works. And I think that artificial deadlines are silly and things are done when they're done. We try and hit meet a deadline, but you have a winter like what we had and things don't happen. And I don't think that just to follow that deadline because we're not out of compliance, we haven't broken any laws, it just doesn't all fit into any columns. I don't think we should be selling the house until it's done. Not for sale at all, not until that point.
Right.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions? Because I do have a motion and a second, right?
Okay.
Are we ready to vote? Okay. Did you read the question?
It is moved to approve the real estate contract and memorandum of understanding with Marge LC as presented.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you for your help, Bob.
Moving on to the next item under board priority number two, culture, climate, safety, security. The first one is consider adoption of return-to-play protocol for district activities.
So, one of the requirements, a change in law is for the board to approve the return-to-play protocol. And so, it is included in your handout or your packet as to what law requires for us to do. This is the return-to-play protocol we'll be using in the 1920 school year, beginning with football and volleyball. So, it's my recommendation to approve the adoption of the return-to-play protocol as recommended by rules in Iowa code.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions?
So, this won't pick up for baseball and softball?
No, we already have a return-to-play protocol in place, but this new one takes effect next school year. Ours is very similar.
Any other questions? If not, would you read the question?
It is moved to adopt the return-to-play protocol as required.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
I'm abstaining on that because I didn't get a chance to study it, but I want to go on something that I...
Okay, well noted. The next item is consider approval of the revised certified staff handbook and I think you have a summary of changes.
Correct, and if you remember, this was included last month, but then I realized there was a notice that I had to post for eight days or so many days with the staff. And so, that has been completed, I received no comments from the staff. We did have the labor relations committee work through these. But you do have the staff's summary of the changes and then you also have the whole handbook if you want to, to read that.
We had a committee work on the handbook, Craig.
Okay. Motion of approval, do I have a second? Thank you, Amanda, second. Any other comments or questions?
I have one comment, question on page 14, under, we're talking about the sick leave bank, number, or letter C administration. Where it builds that committee, says the board shall have, shall also designate three members. I've only heard us talk about one, that being Craig. Do we have three members on that?
No, we just have one.
On the committee, on the... On the sick leave committee?
Well, no, on the labor relations.
On the labor relations.
We've only had, we had one request this year and the committee got together. I try to stay out of it because I'm the appeal process.
I mean, I don't think it's, I just think going forward, if that's what it says, we need to have designated three.
No, typically had two board designees from administration that would cover that. Basically, one from each of the buildings that's not the same building as the requested.
It just says the board shall designate three members, it doesn't say they have to be board members. Is that what you're saying?
That's part of what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah. So, we, we have had one board member and then we have had two administrators. Now, if the board would prefer they all be board members, but again, if you go through the appeal, you get too many of us in there, that might not be, that's, that's it.
Well, I will definitely admit that the language could be clear and I think this is right and I kind of noted that for the next time we do revisions on this. But yeah, that's kind of the hard part is, you know, we're usually getting the request and it's, it's almost got to, I don't want to say it's got to be immediate, but it's usually very time sensitive. To try and get those three, three board members together with, you know, teachers or whoever, it gets to be tough, so.
Okay, are we okay there? Okay. All right.
One other comment, I don't know if it was in there, but I think the staff needs to be aware of social media and its positives and negatives. Because we are here to promote the school. And if you're not promoting the school, then to me, that, you have to take that into consideration of, you know, do you really need to be here?
Is that covered in the policies?
There is a policy and, and there's probably, you could probably do something in your opening.
But it, but is that in the, is that in the staff handbook? I don't know, I, I don't remember.
It's in the board policy section.
Sherry was going to kind of work, did she provide informational, to staff about acceptable...
Yes, and for next year, we have a sign-off sheet that they understand those rules.
The board policy is on page 11 as part of the technology use, social media.
Okay.
I'd like to see, I'd like to explore a good copy of what the teachers are going to see that is, you know, acceptable use and not of which, like, Sherry created for them.
Oh, okay. That'd be nice to see. Might be educational for us.
Might be educational and, you know, I, I think that there was a... Might be educational and, you know, I think that there was an instance recently when someone asked me a question about, you know, is this appropriate or not appropriate? There was a missing person. And I'm like, oh, I don't really understand the policy. You know, you better look it up or you hit clarification. You don't want to do anything to get yourself in trouble. So the staff being very clear on where they're at on those things would be very useful to them. It's great because it can be a tool for good and a tool for bad.
I think I have a motion and a second and that's all questions. Does anybody else have other ones? Are we ready to vote? If so, please read the question.
Is moved to approve the revised certified staff handbook as presented.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is consider renewal of property and casualty insurance policy.
And I'm going to turn this over to Chad because he's been working with the insurance company on these numbers. So he has a better understanding.
Yeah, I obviously gave you a variety of information in the packet. So mostly open it to questions because there's significant increase in the cost. I guess probably the two things that I want to emphasize out of all of this is, one, the claims nationwide and in the state of Iowa and in our own pool have been unusually high for three years in a row, which puts a lot of stress on, you know, higher levels of insurance when you get, you know, 10 million to 200 million and the like. You know, the other incident or the other thing pushing this increase and what, how it's structured is of the, oh, if you will, about 100, I don't know what the number is, it's 40, 44, 40 to 43 percent, about 100, yeah, about 110,000 dollar increase on that. About half of that is paying for the new structure of the reinsurance. And then the other part of it, and that's, yeah, the excess property line, you can kind of see where that cost comes in. The other part of it is in our loss fund contribution is much higher as well. Now, the idea being if we have a normal year in 1920, we will be able, we will be recouping that back from the pool. So, you know, while we're putting.
Just the 71, 731, right?
Correct.
This is all stuff that's paid out.
Paid out to vendors and, you know, well, they used to have solely the Hartford be an insurer. And now they've actually got kind of a laddered approach where they've got about six different vendors that fill that excess property category. But, so that's what's really putting a lot of stress and pushing up the premium cost on this. The other categories have modest increases. Workers' comp has a modest increase, but our mod, if you will, is actually a little bit lower, which is a good sign. And I think based on our experience over this last year, that will keep going lower. So, but anyway, I'll kind of leave it open for questions. Yeah.
What year did we move into the, was that?
We're just completing, I believe, our third year, so 15, 16.
Okay. And as I recall, the first year, our projected savings was over $100,000.
Yeah, the, when we took that boat, I think we went ahead and even reduced our levy for the management fund like $70,000, knowing that we would have that much lower of a premium.
Correct. So the second year, we saved money and the third year, I've saved money. And now we're paying 115,000, 113,000 dollars extra. So we're balancing out a little bit, but we have a chance of getting back again.
Correct.
And if we went with another insurance carrier, we could be paying another 100 or 140,000 dollars above what this is.
Right.
So, and my question always is about insurance. Have we had good claim history with this group? And my understanding is, since I haven't heard complaints, evidently we are.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah, we've had just really, it's, yeah, even Bill, you'd have to kind of back me up. I think, you know, a few, a few dings with buses occasionally, but otherwise it's just been that wind tornado incident with the fence and the scoreboard and roof damage. That's been the only thing that we've had really for claims.
But good claim history.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Good claim history was personally, yeah. And I mentioned this, I think in the packet as well, that, you know, next year, obviously if we see an increase like this, we'll have to go out for a quote, just, yeah, see what a variety of competitive bids are.
Well, that's how we got into Gibson.
Yeah.
We had to decide.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. I sure am. Okay. Thank you. So I have a motion. Do I have a second? To renew property and casualty insurance. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? If not, would you read the question?
Is moved to approve the district property and casualty insurance policy as provided by RFP Gallagher and the Iowa Public School Insurance Program effective July 2019 through June 2020 at a cost of $378,963.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. More insurance, right? Next. Next item is consider renewal of the breakdown insurance policy.
Yeah, if you'll remember, last year, we came off a year where we, now the two years here, Bill, we moved from this specialty underwriters over to RME and then we decided this time last year to move from RME over to specialty underwriters because they have a little bit of customer service, a little bit, they gave us a better quote and then, yeah, a little bit more streamlined for submitting claims. And that's still been the case. We've been pleased with, you know, what we've been able to reimburse the general fund for through this program. And obviously really a modest increase. In fact, the increase is obviously split between increase in equipment and that we're getting covered and then increase in the overall premium, mostly driven because we do have, we're getting a good amount of claims on it, which, you know, we're trying to shoot for at least 80% back on the premiums.
And we pay for this out of the.
Management fund.
Management fund and the.
Savings.
The savings all go to the.
The general fund.
The general fund.
And, yeah, I'll have to really applaud the staff, office staff in my office, but then particularly David Gleason, but also the technology staff and the maintenance staff, Mike Martin, Shelley Lamb, or Stacy Lamb out there do an excellent job of pursuing these reimbursements and, because it takes a little bit of paperwork to get that done and they all do an excellent job with it. So, yeah, I'd recommend a renewal.
I had a question about the, we leave items, 65, one to one laptop and one pop here. Are they gone? I mean, are they old, obsolete or?
Correct, yeah. They're not ones we have anymore. Exactly.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to approve the renewal of breakdown insurance policy as presented. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions that people have had? I think it's been a good program, it sounds like, for our district. Okay. If not, please read the question.
Is moved to approve the equipment maintenance insurance policy as provided by specialty underwriters insurance company effective July 2019 through June 2020 at a cost of $218,176.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to board priority number three, facilities and finance. First thing we have is consider the approval of minutes, financials and abstract of claims. Any questions about the minutes? If not, financials. Chad, do you want to make a couple of comments about?
Yeah, I don't know that I necessarily have much for comments. It's fairly stable month. Obviously, the one we've been watching is food service and I keep making some progress, so.
Do you feel like we're getting caught up on that?
Yep.
The billing cycle?
Yeah, right. Yeah, I think we're basically there on that. In fact, I don't know if it would, I guess it would probably affect, I didn't look closely at the abstract, if we have a U.S. foods payment on there, but if we do, it would be the last one because we.
I think there is.
Yeah, and that should be the last one for them because we've gotten all that reconciled that here's the remaining invoices and items and so that should be.
But we do have some expenses to expense back into.
Yeah.
June will be.
We will.
There'll be expenses in June.
We'll have July and August payrolls, which, you know, it's not very large, but it'll still be there. Or we won't have revenue in those two months, so.
But it is nice to know that we have nearly $60,000 in the year ago. I think it was in the water.
Yeah, I believe so too. Okay. Any other questions or Carl, would you like to comment about the final balance?
We're not growing too long funds, 10, 436,000 dollars.
Okay.
Cheryl, can I make a comment?
You bet.
And again, I do it really bad, but I want to clarify so no one will see some things that I'm trying to change the dress code.
Oh, what'd you say?
With Rock, I mean, reintroducing families at the middle school and the dress code at elementary school. I think it was, I asked Mr. Danny about the dress of the graduation.
Oh, okay.
Not the.
That is correct, for graduation. Yes, that is correct. So let's, okay. So we will amend the minutes.
However, I do like school uniforms, but I have not.
Yeah, there you go.
You didn't want social media to drive through.
All right, so we have a revision for the minutes to clarify that. Now we're to abstract of claims. Anybody have comments or questions on the abstract? I stopped in this afternoon and got all of my questions answered.
I had a question. I did not get a chance to send it in, but FHI International Court, HPE Aruba switches. I'm assuming they're for computers and.
It is. It's not Aruba the island.
It's not?
No. It's technology. They just want us to dream about Aruba, I guess.
Pretty good technology, though, that it switched to Aruba.
Yeah, that's right.
Those for the special ed and PIMIC. I am hoping that those placements came from outside our district?
PIMIC definitely did, yeah.
Okay, so our stamp is not?
No.
Right.
Okay.
Are these going to affect our, what we thought was a good special ed balance? Is the, are these going to negatively affect?
We're still ahead of where we were at last year.
We're ahead of last year.
Well, we're, well, or.
We're still behind.
Going in the right direction.
Yeah, we'll still have a negative balance, but it's better.
But better.
A positive negative balance.
Positive negative balances, yeah. We're making progress.
Making progress.
Okay. No other questions there? Then I would be looking for a motion to approve as amended the minutes, financials and abstract of claims. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other comments? If not, please read the question.
Is moved to approve the amended minutes, financials and abstract of claims as presented.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item is consider approval of agreement of stipulation with OSSA.
So we have been working, well Chad has really been working all year with the union in regards to pulling Stacy Lamb, her position out of the bargaining unit due to her administrative responsibilities and access to sensitive evaluative information. And so they did, the support union did agree to that. And so this is your, the letter that's in here is the letter of agreement with them. So it's my recommendation to adopt the agreement of stipulation. So she would no longer be covered under the union. She'd be an exempt employee.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you. Do I have a second? Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, would you read the question?
Is moved to adopt the agreement of stipulation with the OSLSA Sports Staff Association as presented.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item is consider the contract with FRK for facilities master planning.
So this contract has been reviewed by Danielle at Allers and Cooney and we did make a change today, Carl and I, with the architects. If you go to page 26 of the, it's a mid long contract, but really it is for master planning for the district. And there are three phases and each phase is at the bottom there, kind of highlighted in gray. It is listed as what it's not to exceed time for those phases. And really that is what we were, we are contracting. The contract also states that we have a seven day notice to get out of the contract. So if at any time we're not happy or we're not pleased with the progress, we can provide seven days notice and the contract is done with paying for the time that was invested previously. So the change comes on page 27 in the larger gray box. We were uncomfortable with that, we're not uncomfortable that if the district selects projects after this to move forward, that FRK would have a shot at those, that we may choose to continue with them. But if we choose to continue with them, we want to renegotiate this box. We don't want to agree to it right now. We felt like those percentages were a little high. And we told them that, had a conversation today and they agreed to remove that box. So really, we're agreeing to the master planning fees not to exceed and then we'll have options to move that forward depending on what the board determines to do with that master plan. So it's my recommendation to approve the contract with FRK with those changes outlined for facilities master planning.
And I believe that the facilities committee interviewed FRK about the long range planning a month ago. I've been to many meetings. It was not too many, right? And therefore I'd like to make, approve the contract for maximum $25,000.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Okay, I have a motion and a second. Comments or questions from the board? As we're, I guess I have a question. As we're doing this process, will the whole board be involved in that master planning?
You can be as involved as you want to be.
Sure.
We'll let you come to any meeting you want to. We are putting together a visionary committee and if you'd like to sit on that, we can definitely post it as a work session where we'll be looking at our facilities and talking about space needs and renovation needs or just needs in general, so.
With our meeting today, the entire board facilities committee is on the leadership team. So Eric and Craig are on that, that group. And just for the rest of the board, it's anticipated we're going to have a report before the end of the year.
Yeah, I would say October, November will be a draft.
Yes, and a final report before, before.
Hopefully November, but November or December.
So, so there's going to be a lot of work happening, happening pretty quick, so.
But I agree with Shelley is.
You don't want to get too far ahead of the rest of us.
Right.
You know, make sure you're bringing us along.
Well, no, but I think we give you guys the option to sit in on any and all those types of meetings to voice what you think is important.
Or at least learn, yeah.
But we did talk about the communication to not only the board, but the communities and society and everything about how we wanted to do that. And that's something there of how we're going to do it, but that was part of the discussion.
Okay. Okay, that answers my question. Anybody else have other comments or questions? If not, would you read the question?
Is moved to approve the contract with Freebert, Rensfield, Cobus Architect Engineers PC for facility planning services as presented and amended with a cost not to exceed $25,000.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item on the agenda then is consider access to video production and extracurricular events.
Okay, so this is a new one for you. And if, we're here to answer your questions tonight. We can take action or we can consider it at a later date. There's no hurry on this one. But it was brought to my attention earlier this week, last week, that there is some concern over our video feed with our video production when we produce our ball games. Especially the KBOE currently provides a percentage, I'm going to look to Ryan for some information here, provides a percentage to us, but Ryan's not sure what that percentage is. It's kind of a, we get some money sometimes and we don't get money other times. And so it's, there's no written agreement.
Non-contractual.
No written agreement for that. And so we have been approached by MCG in partnership with KIIC and OSK News to also have access to our video feed. And so in having conversation with Ryan and Mr. Bandy and Kim Guile, you know, trying to decide, well, how do we keep everyone happy? How do we share our, our product and how do we make it fair? And so in speaking with Ryan, I made the decision to recommend what you see in your packet, which is to set a price for. packet, which is to set a price for our video feed, which we, again, not a lot of reason, just in discussing with people what is that video feed worth, and I think we're on the low end, but recommending to set the price of $1,000 per season, and we would consider it three seasons, fall, winter, springs, spring and summers together, for a total of $3,000 for the year, and anybody that would like access to that feed could then have access to the feed. The other option that you have is that we could just bid out the feed and sell it to the highest bidder, and have those two entities bid on the feed. So after that, you can see that yesterday I received this from Kim Guile, I laid it on your table. She is worried about that if we sell it to two different people for that price, they both pay it, that her students will not necessarily know who to listen to, because the broadcast booth does direct the students, and so, are they gonna be getting direction from KBOE? And are they gonna be getting direction from MCG? And then how are they gonna decide, you know, how are they gonna manage that as students having direction from two different production booths? And so, you can see her recommendation or her opinions there as well. I received that yesterday. Ryan and Stacy are here to jump in.
May I just read the board also?
That would be up to Shelley. So Ryan, do you want to jump in on anything I left out?
Basically, I think, I think it's great that we have two people that want to, you know, I mean, instead of being left out with not hearing anybody, but it leaves the question of who gets the rights, you know, and there's no contract currently in place, and so we've drafted a contract and whatnot to do. So, that's where I brought it all up. That's where we're at.
And I just, this is a bigger fish than just me deciding, so that's why we'll have the discussion at the table.
I also feel that it's about our students, and it's about OVP, and it's, it's our learning process, and I think that no matter who gets the feed, we should be the ones doing it and learning from it, and so, as far as, as long as they're happy with that, we're good. If they're not, and they want to do their own correction, then they go their way. But it's about learning for us, and, and we've got lots of kids who are in professionally doing this and going to attend, and we, we produce that. So we wanted to help do that, and the only way we can do it is through our hands.
Is it possible, since they're two entities, if the students would work with the one entity and the second group would say, that's fine with us? I don't know that much about it, to know if that would work.
I, I don't, no. I think what we're faced with is that, you know, the people want it, which is a great thing, and talk about splitting it and being able to give the feed to both entities, but it creates, like Kim says, a little bit of a distraction, distraction, a conflict of how you go about things. We're not opposed to either one of them, you know, and I think anybody can come shoot the video. But what we're trying to do is put a contract in place that if Company A wants this and Company B wants this, why would we give it to Company A and not Company B? And I think that's where we're at.
Okay.
What are we doing straight now? Hold up.
Right now, KBOE has, has it with no contract in place. Using our kids, shooting, our kids are behind the cameras, our kids are helping the production side of things, but again, no contract in place, so when you have a second entity wanting it, I need to tell them no.
How, how long has it been in place, that you're aware of, or do you?
When I came here five years ago, we were doing it ourselves. And you know, they approached us two years after that, so we've been doing it about three years from there. And we also have put in a great deal of money into the cameras and things like that, and also, being in correspondence with my general manager who was on his way here, once we found out this was gonna be on the agenda for tonight, I don't know who said it was a small amount, or maybe we have a different definition of a small, but last month it was over $400,000.
Mr. Parker, do you want to comment?
This comes in from, oh, sorry.
Joe, I'm not, I'm not saying it's a small amount, I'm saying we don't have a contracted amount, and I'm not, I love what KBO is doing, so please don't take this as, as anything you've done wrong, or we're not happy with it. We're, we're happy with the service, we're happy with, you know, we, we want the learning experience for our kids. We just have two people wanting the feed now, all of a sudden, and we need to figure out what to do with it. So, Ryan, do you have numbers on what we have received?
Also, Mark's got $1,700,000. I don't have all of them.
And, and you're saying we don't have to make a decision, yet...
I'm not special right now.
Yeah, we don't have to make a decision tonight, it's more about what, what kind of information does the board feel like we would need to have to be able to make a, to make a, here's how, here's how we would do this.
There's questions.
Yeah.
So, so five years ago, if I remember right, the kids were commentating on this, and I thought, this is kind of interesting, and a different viewpoint, and some of them really didn't know the game.
Sometimes.
But that was kind of the long enough watching it.
Joe doesn't know the game.
I mean, if you listen to, like, I listen to a soccer game a lot back, and if I remember correctly, I mean, the kids, you know the kids.
Right.
To me, when I listen to some individuals that commentate on football, they know the kids, they know their stats, they know their history, they, they provide commentary that is fun to listen to. I mean, whether you laugh or not, or whether you know the sport.
Right.
I think it's, this is what it's about for kids, and that's why we're here, so I guess.
It's all about kids.
It is, and then, I mean, they're learning, and they're fun to listen to, and obviously, everybody wants them, so.
So again, back to what, is there stuff that the boards need? Yeah, the board needs, what's the...
Fair way to do this.
Does anyone have thoughts? I started to write a few down, but...
I have a question. Go ahead.
Oh, no, we don't think alike, so.
That's okay that you don't think alike.
So if Company B, Company A uses a company that wants it, do they pay for that?
That, that's what we're sort of coming to you for, yeah.
But not now, we don't. Like, so this other company wants the feed, they don't get it?
We currently do not.
Okay.
They're the only person that has our fees.
So, just to clarify, currently nobody, nobody currently changes hands for as a fee for the feed.
There is not, there is not a contract in place.
But there is, KBOE just helped out with equipment and things like that, that costs the money, so.
Do we know what our, what we own as a district?
That was what I was gonna ask.
Yeah, I wrote down, gather information was step one.
And honestly, when we started this, MCG was a major player, and bought all the, bought all the equipment, and all the cameras, all this stuff, and multiple VP started, and I had a week before, sorry.
When I got here, they were already, MCG was already giving, that was a lot of years ago, they were already giving all kinds of cameras and equipment, and we had some gentlemen coming over to teach, help teach class, and Kim was in it. Since that time, there haven't been some cameras other than Jim, but as far as that goes, we've also gone back and talked with MCG about other cameras, and they're working with us in that, too.
Do you have a list of what that we own, maybe for us to look at? And what we, what we're lacking, or whatever we're providing?
That's always a good idea, not to have a, it's not as fun, it's not as convenient, but always good. Again, for everyone to be on the same page, and for everything to be spelled out and black and white, makes, makes things simpler.
What's your recommendation?
My recommendation, again, was before I saw Kim's, so before, prior to that, it was to set a price, and that could be negotiated with, you know, I'm not stuck on that, I just went with the 1,700 that we had received, and thought, what's it worth? And I talked to a few people about what that feed might be worth, and I went on the low end. So, my recommendation is to set a price of $1,000 per season for this first year, and that would be three seasons, fall, winter, and then spring, summers together, for a total of $3,000 for the year, if they wanted the whole year. So if they just wanted all feeds, you just pay the thousand. That, that price would be then split between half of it going to activities for lots of gate receipts, and half of it going to the OVP program for new equipment or what their needs. And again, that was my way of, of keeping it fair and trying to make sure everybody had access, and not choosing one or the other. So that's my recommendation. I think we need to have some communication with Kim as to how to address her concerns, 'cause she's coming at it from the teacher perspective, and so she's got some concerns there.
She's early on us.
So that wasn't an option today. Lucky her. The other option that you have is to bid it out. You know, you could put the feed out for bid, and anybody interested could bid for it, and you could sell it to the highest bidder, but then somebody gets left out in that scenario.
We don't eat local or thin or, um, does it, does any type of thing like this that we can look at what they do and what they?
That was step two that I wrote down, was look at what others are doing.
The ones that I know are videotaping it, they're, they have somebody videotaping it, and they're live streaming, so they're like going to the cube, or you've seen those at other schools, so that's not what OVP is about, 'cause OVP is more about the production, so anybody can video and livestream, right? I mean, I could, it'd just be...
We've seen your videos.
Yeah. So we don't want to go that route. We like the kids.
I didn't mean good or bad. Either way, we've seen them.
We like the student production piece of it. This is about the kids' learning, yes, and so we, we definitely do not want to lose sight of that through this whole process, so.
Last night I checked, my radio and my vehicle is on the sound. And when I sit in my living room, I have the TV that's got video there, that I can watch the soccer game and the basketball game, and the softball games are on every evening. So I mean, I don't know why we didn't utilize the media that is available to let our community know what is going on good with our school. So whether we, I wish we're getting extra money for the school and things like that, but I think we ought, we shouldn't just say, well, it's gonna be radio, or it's gonna be TV, if we work a arrangement out that we can have radio and I'm driving my vehicle, and I can have sight and sound when I'm sitting in my recliner, I think it'd be a win for everybody.
Yeah, we would not choose, we would not charge for radio broadcasts, so anybody could come to any game and broadcast, and there would be no, no fee for radio to broadcast. It's really the kids' video feed that we're talking about, that people want right now. At least two entities want it.
Well, along that line, I'm trying to, this isn't my wheelhouse by any means, so I'm trying to put this together, so two radio stations that you listen to with your ears want video feed, so to...
And actually, one of the...
To play...
Only one of the entities in play here actually broadcasts radio over the air, the other thing is just an internet feed.
Okay, but, so, so what are they going to do with our video feed? I guess, you know, is it on MCG, is it on the air, or on internet, is it on other networks?
Yes, yes, yes. They put it out.
On other...
Do they resell it for one?
You know, to...
They sell advertising?
Media com, watch it on their TV? Those are questions that I have.
They get sponsors and we sell ads.
Well, that's what it sounds like, and I think back to what's good for kids, I think some of the, the questions that Kim has asked, we should try to figure out if there is, if we, if we open it up, can there be a win-win with the kids and education, and having multiple people have it, I think is what I'm hearing people kind of lean towards. I don't know an answer to that, but we could...
What about if Kim, again, I'm not, I'm tearing your head off.
You're bringing it up.
You don't eat five hundred pennies, but to, for me to sit here and say this is, I mean, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with what Mrs. Wright recommends, but if we're not in agreement, let's maybe get a small committee and talk through that, because this, I could be a little bit about it, but, I mean, I think most of the people out here probably don't want to hand this out and make this decision to come to us. For me to sit here and say, let's do this or that, I don't...
Well, and Mrs. Guile's recommendation is not an adequate one, I mean, the, really your choice is to either sell the feed for a price, or to bid it out to somebody. If you only want one feed going out, then we need to bid it, and take bids and see what we get. I mean, could be a hundred bucks, it could be 5,000, I don't know.
Right.
Or you can just set a price on it and say, anybody that wants it can pay the price and have it. Or you can give it to everybody free, but I think it's about the kids and what you and Mr. Parker, Mr. Bandy, Mrs. Guile, just...
Mr. Parker and I haven't talked since Ms. Guile sent this, but are you still on the same page with my recommendation, or have you changed your mind since?
You know, I...
Put you on the spot.
You know, Kim has a different view of it, and I, I'm not in that group at the moment. You know, I see, I've worked with MCG in lunch shop, getting butts in seats, what do they call it, you know, and, you know, people sitting at an establishment watching the game and not coming to our games and supporting our kids. So that's my vision, different than what her vision is. I also don't want to make anybody mad in this process, you know, I mean, there are a lot of people that are, you know, involved in this, Joe being one of them, we got a relationship with Joe. But I also know that when we got two people involved, we have to try and find a way, and have to have something in place to make that decision. And so, I think that doesn't really answer my, your question. That's what I'm there.
So we need to investigate some other ways, so everybody can come out with a one way, maybe. The kids first, the rest of it second.
I think what I'm hearing from, you know, the board members here, is that we're not ready to make a decision on this yet, that we need to come back to this at another time after a man just committed.
Did we, did we follow Amanda's suggestion to the board member who worked with...
That's what I was just gonna ask, too.
Work with one board member who has a real interest in this.
We can pull Kim in and talk with Stacy, and I don't know what else to, or why.
No, I just...
You have this real estate contract all done now.
We can try and work on something if you want. Okay. We'll work on bringing something back about that.
Thank you.
You fall to the present.
Well, I didn't think I was gonna get anybody else convinced, so, okay. All right, so we will do that, so that added again to our next problem meeting. Next item is consider release of retainage for high school gymnasium, gymnasium renovation project.
You received a final pay app, I believe, did we send that to board?
Yep, we did.
For the high school gym renovation project, and so, right now, what we are asking that you do is to approve the payment of that pending the release of the claim against the contractor. So, we want the check to be cut and held in our office until all the legal requirements are made, but as far as the school district is concerned, they have completed everything that we asked them to complete. So, we are square on our side. There is one claim against the contractor, so that's, requires us to hold that for 30 days following the release of that claim, so we've got a little wait time, but once that, those legal requirements are met, we want to be able to release that money.
Okay.
Here again, what we, what this recommendation is comes from the facilities committee, that we talked about it, and we went back to the contractor and said, hey, you're, you gotta satisfy the school, mainly Bill, and, and I was on that committee, so Bill and Carl and Mrs. Wright is the ones, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but at this point in time, the, the list has all been done, the painting is up to date, there's been a change order for a scratch on the panel, there's a change order for... there's a change order for some columns where the column will set down square, they don't attach square on the concrete, and we've had a reduction in this amount. And I guess Mrs. Wright and Carl and Bill think that this is a reasonable settlement, and we ought to clean it up, and that recommendation, the final payment was from our architect, and therefore I would move it through.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Amanda? Any other comments or questions? If not, please read the question.
I would move to approve the release of retainage to DDVI Inc. in the amount of $58,472.83 pending receipt of the release from the claim against contractor.
And I would include all other legal requirements, all of the legal waiting period. Because there is a waiting period. You have to hold it for so long.
So I'll have you read it one more time with that. We have the full thing in one reading.
I would move to approve, I would move to approve the release of retainage to DDVI Inc. in the amount of $58,472.83 pending receipt of the release from the claim against contractor and meeting all other legal requirements.
And that was what you seconded, correct, Amanda? That is what you seconded? All right. Motion and a second. Any other questions? If not, please read the question. One more time.
I would move to approve the release of retainage to DDVI Inc. in the amount of $58,472.83 pending receipt of the release from the claim against contractor and meeting all other legal requirements.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next item is Board Party Number Four, Professional Learning and Hour Two Board Policies. First item is consider the final reading of revised Board Policies 500 and to 503, right? And these are, this is our second reading. We had a couple minor changes, correct, last time?
Correct. After the first reading, there were a few directives to make a few changes, and so those are highlighted in your packet.
Packet.
And I can review those if you need me to. But this is a final reading, so...
Any comments or questions on those changes? If not, I would be looking for a motion to approve the final reading of revised Board Policies 500 and to 503.
Since I'm on the policy committee, I move to do that.
Thank you. How about a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second from two people from the committee that worked on those. And Eric, you, I think, had brought up a couple of those, so is there anything that you had other questions about?
I'm still not comfortable with the language about the, when off school property...
Yes, we, yep. And that's the one thing that we didn't make a change on, and we had quite a lengthy discussion as an admin team. And we still feel like it is important for us to reserve the right that if the problem come, from off school comes onto school property, that we need to be able to deal with it. Again, if it happens offsite and we don't know about it, and it's not our deal...
Doesn't cause any problem at school?
But if it comes into school, we need to have the ability to deal with the issue. So that is the one change that we discussed at length and did not make.
There was an incident in West Moone?
Oh, yeah. I think that was in the news.
That there was something happened outside the school grounds the next day, it came into the school, there was a scuffle, and the principal ended up in the hospital, but, you know, things like that will sometimes move in.
Which, again, goes to my point, when it came in, and it became a school problem.
And it was a school problem.
Then it already was against the rules to ask couples in school.
So maybe it's Belt and Suspenders type of language, because I think it means the same thing.
I think that actually is excellent. It's a Belt and Suspenders.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion. Oh, yes.
504.4. Language regarding immoral.
Remember, that was the, Eric brought that up last month of the, what is immoral? And so we took that out. So it's just inappropriate behavior, I believe. I can pull, you can pull that up.
Unethical, yeah.
Yeah. So it's just behavior. We took out the, yeah, we do it.
The word immoral, yeah.
Words that I think were discussed possibly unethical.
Yep. With the same, what's unethical.
That's true.
Yeah, so we tried to clean it up a little bit.
Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'm going to have him read the question. Please read the question.
I would move to approve for the second final reading revised Board Policies 500 through 503 as presented and amended.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Consider first reading, the next item is consider the first reading of Board Policies 504 to 505.
So you had a summary sheet, and then you also had the actual policies. And again, this is a first reading, so if there's any suggested changes or things to
I didn't necessarily have any issue with the parental involvement one. It just was all read, so I was like, it's a new policy.
It is a required policy. I was surprised we didn't have it already, so...
And does it, how close is it aligned to what IASB recommends, was my other question.
It is pretty much, except I spelled annually with two N's.
Oh, yeah, that was the other thing, but I found a typo on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions that people had in first readings? That was the only one I had.
Actually, I think Lynette found that rental involvement policy, you're talking about the things. We use theirs as a template.
I probably have the same questions. Again, not necessarily, I don't have any issues with the words in the policy, but I just wondered on the student promotion, retention, and acceleration, there was quite a bit of difference. I just wondered if that had been copied from something, or if that aligned with the IASB recommendations, too.
Yes, it has been. That's where we got it from. And then some other sample.
I actually like it better than what we had before, so, okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'd look for a motion.
I move.
For the first reading of 504 and 505. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any other questions that people had? Again, these will come back to us again for a second and final reading. Okay? Would you read the question?
I would move to approve for the first reading revised Board Policies 504 through 505 as presented and amended.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same sign? Okay. We'll see those again on our next meeting. Then we move on to consider renewal of membership in the Iowa Association of School Boards. I think there was a letter in our packet that I had received.
Yes, it is time to renew your, your membership in Iowa Association of School Boards, and it's our recommendation. I assume you want to continue. They provide valuable support to the board president for sure, but also as a board with trainings and those kinds of things, so I don't know why you wouldn't continue your membership, but if so...
I move we approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
I believe I said this last year, that, you know, the IASB services they offer are essentially a lobby body, and they're concerned with what they're concerned with. And sometimes the things they lobby for I agree with, and sometimes the things they lobby for, I strongly disagree with. And I think that they're personally, I think that their track record on that with me personally, I'm not saying for anybody else, is only 50/50. So I'm not saying that the board should be a part of it. I'm just saying that certainly they have reservations.
I look every week when we get the updates from education around Iowa, and I read about some of these districts that have these great ideas, and all this year, Oskaloosa has not been in there once that I've seen.
Once.
Once?
Yes.
Well, I must have been on vacation.
You probably were.
I didn't care, but, but I know Mrs. Wright is, well, I believe Mrs. Wright's on committees with IASB, and I go to the workshops and things like that. But when Oskaloosa's doing things that are 15 times better than what they're, some of these schools are doing, I think Oskaloosa ought to be recognizing there, and I think somebody from our school board ought to inform them that when they read the newspaper, and I believe that's where they get their information, from newspapers, that they ought to at least put positive things in there about what Oskaloosa's going on. I mean, one of the positive things we have going on is the Early Childhood Center that is moving, and that has not made that update yet. And that's a lot more major than a lot of the stuff that I read about there.
A lot of the high school teams going after businesses and some of that educational thing. So do we have to make contact with them, or do they just go out and search for those?
I just wrote that down.
They pull up from newspapers, so I'm not sure how they're getting it, but we could definitely feed it when we see things.
Okay.
But no, I've never told them about anything, and we've shown up once that I remember seeing, so...
I do have a motion and a second to continue the membership. Any other comments or concerns?
Is that helpful when you were doing on the committee for the salary?
Yeah, there's a lot of good information out there that you can go pull. I use it quite a bit, but...
I think that's helpful.
I use it, yeah. I go on there and get data. Some of the data I'm going to share with you, my evaluation is pulled off of there.
Okay. Any other comments? Are we ready to vote?
Do most of the districts in Iowa, how many do you belong to them?
Boy, guessing there's maybe like five that don't.
They lost some when they had that controversy, and then they, they've gained them back.
Even just their policy primer, and again, maybe you have access to other things, but the stuff you can look at from a policy standpoint, I think is very helpful.
There's two entities you can get policy updates from, and that's ISVIS or IASB. And they both give you about the same policy updates, but we would need that...
Can board members log into that one?
Sure. We pay for the IASB one. Yeah, we would need something, because you can't keep up with these legal policies without somebody sending them to you. So we would be paying a lawyer to review them if we didn't have access to that, which would be way more than...
That would cost us more than this.
It would be one month's worth of reviewing.
I didn't say I was going to go to the...
No, I know. That is one of the definite advantages, is that policy primer.
Do our membership fees decrease, you share?
Slightly because of enrollment, yes.
That's what I thought.
Okay. All right, I'm going to go ahead and have you read the question.
I would move to approve affiliation with the Iowa Association of School Boards and the related membership dues of $7,598.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the next item. Review subsequent meeting, oh, I'm skipping this first thing.
You can do the meeting date while I'm hooking up the computer.
Okay.
I don't know where. Why aren't we just hooking up to the projector?
We will...
I think you can go on the screens.
Well, she's setting up for the enrollment projections and Focus on Education. We can talk about the subsequent meeting date. So both Chad and Mrs. Wright will be out of the office during the first week of July. It's probably not a good time for us to have a meeting without the two of them.
Your board packet will be really late.
It will be, yeah, really.
Hey, that might be a good thing.
It'll be a quick meeting.
It'll be way shorter.
Yeah.
So we're proposing that we move it to Tuesday, July 16th at 6:00. And if you would like to schedule a work session prior, because it will be a thinner agenda, it's July. So if you would like to do a 5:00 or just 6 to 8 and have a work session, you guys just let me know. Or you want a different night?
I don't think that's six, not six.
Six, and then do the action items and a work session on handbooks and policies.
If we think it's going to be a lighter...
It should be a lighter agenda.
I'm okay with that. I will be back if we have a second meeting in July. I was just thinking I'm on vacation that week, so you need to go on vacation, too. I will. If I was going to miss the meeting, I would just make sure they knew I would miss, but I will be here the week of 16th, so...
Wanted to schedule it for 6:00 on the 16th, and then we'll, we'll do an action items and a work session.
Okay.
Okay, sounds like mine.
You need a motion for that?
Sure. So Chad won't be able to read it, do you?
Sure.
How do I hook up?
Uh, just, yeah. Take your computer and then, do you have HDMI?
You made a motion to, you made a motion.
Change the date, too.
Okay. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Please read the question.
Move to change the regular board meeting date for July 2019 from July 9th to July 16th.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, now we'll go back up, since we're, we're to that point of Focus on Education, and we'll take a look at enrollment projections.
Yeah, so this is just a real quick learning opportunity for you about enrollment and just looking at what we are projecting and where we've been and where we're at. Hopefully, you'll be able to see it.
Yeah, it doesn't...
Lots of information in this spreadsheet, so you can kind of see how we add the wrong ones.
That'll probably help.
Okay, it's the ding.
There we go.
Okay, and I, I work with this all the time, so please just jump in with a question if I, you know, skip over stuff that you wanted to know. I built in this information when it came in the fall, as far back as I could find accurate data for enrollment. So you can see it goes back to about 1415 with data, and this is by grade, and this, we monitor this by the month. So the first of every month, Lisa sends me numbers, and these are butts in seats. So realize the butts in seats are different than certified enrollment. So these are currently served students, and that's how we determine class size and all of those kinds of decisions. And so you can kind of see the trend of the information that I knew, that I was able to come up with in terms of class sizes. All of the rows to the right are all actuals as of June 1st. And then my projection, so for the, this column right here, it is, I'm estimating it is June 1 data, but it's in advanced. Everybody's advanced to grade, so we're projecting into next year now for enrollment. And so you can see it by grade, and it's calculating down here. You can also see, again, by building and the growth or the change. And so this is the number right here that I monitor. Current enrollment, if that makes sense. So this right now is current enrollment as of June 1st, and this is projecting into next year. This is the growth and change. So if it's a positive number, it's a larger... So overall difference, right there. So then this all feeds into class size, so you can kind of see how we start to determine how many sessions. So right here is 1718. This is 1819, again, as of June 1st. And now over here, we're projecting into 1920 for class size. So you can see the number of students enrolled, again, butts in seats, the number of sections we have, and the average class size for those grades. So if you start my spreadsheet, it'll all be the same. So if you project into 1920, again, you roll those grades forward. You can see, again, we're, don't pay attention to preschool. I mean, do pay attention to preschool, but we're estimating right there a full preschool. So we're estimating 151 kindergartens, kindergartners will have eight sections, so we're looking at an average class size of 18 to 19 for the class. And you can kind of see that all through.
We just kind of prep.
Kinder prep is considered kindergarten, they're part of the eight sections. So, two of those sections will be kinder prep, but as far as this spreadsheet is concerned, they're all just kindergartners, they're five-year-olds.
Okay.
Go, go back up to the very beginning. So, our senior class that graduated looked like it was a fairly large class.
This one?
Yes, so.
160.
160, and next year's class is going to be 143. But the kindergartners coming in, we're expecting 10 more. Is that right?
Here?
Yeah, 160.
They're over, they're over here, this is 1920.
Right, but last year, we only had 150, right? Kindergartners?
Correct.
So, that's why.
Well, again, that's as of June 1st, so that doesn't mean we started the year there, and we apply update every year. So, right now, we're projecting, as of the other day when I talked to Anna, we have 151 kindergartners enrolled right now.
Okay.
For next year. Again, that number could change tomorrow, I mean, it fluctuates every day, so you just have to pick a day.
Right. But, but the point I'm trying to make is when you have a large graduating class, and you get another, that, the class coming up is smaller, and you don't replace them with that size, your enrollment's going to decrease.
Correct. If you graduate 160 and you bring in 150, you're down 10.
Yes.
Right off the start.
Exactly. Right.
So, this just shows, it's just in chart form, the same information, by grade, so you can see the fluctuation by year. You can see our enrollment, again, butts and seats. The data that I was able to secure is confident.
But, but, in the end-of-the-year reports, that was interesting to note, too, from the high school and the middle school, and even elementary, that the trend line is down over 11 years, I think that's what high school had.
And so, one of the things that I started to collect, or I want to collect, that hasn't been collected before, so you see some negative numbers, but we will have some numbers in there, is the number of students who actually attend Roundup, or that we know in the spring, and then the actual number that show up in the fall as enrolled.
Right.
So, that hasn't been tracked before, so I will begin tracking that on this page. Same with four-year-olds, like, how many four-year-olds do we have, a four-year-old Roundup, and then how many actually show up, so we can start to make more accurate predictions of our numbers, so. It looks like fixed bike right now.
Just add a little bit more for you, have you, or anyone else ever done any birth rate?
No, but you get that on IASB.
Yeah, it's declining.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I know when we have an open enrollment issue, we discuss that a lot.
Yes.
If there's less kids, period, then.
That's what, that's the problem.
The other thing that hasn't been charted or tracked, that I started to track, is homeschool assistance and homeschool delinquents. So, you see this, this data starting there, and that's this year's current students there. And so, we'll start to see some trend data over time as we track those, those kids. And then this is Carlos' spreadsheet. He's been asked like five-year projections, how far out can we go with projections? And so, it's too big to really show, this is 2526. And again, it's assuming we have a whole class, that we continue with our average class size, which is 160. And you can see our enrollment trend, it's this, this top number right here, we wouldn't want to include preschool yet, because they're funded differently, but. So, you can see that right now, at 277, or 2077, 2093, so we're looking at right now a little bump, then back to 2070, 2077, so we're really fairly stable projected over the next six years that are on here, which is a good thing. We'd like to see that grow, but, you know, stable is better than fixed bikes. Questions about enrollment, or?
But these, these numbers that are built five years ahead is, are numbers that we need to have for a long-range, a self-aid plan, a long-range educational plan.
We can compare these numbers with what IASB puts out, is their production, or the DE puts out, there's just probably a little bit more statistical in mind, but you can see the average class size, which I think is interesting to, again, monitor here, and, you know, we've been up right at 160, we were at 170, you can see the decline there over time, 177, 178, 162.
Right.
Again, that's the average.
The thing, our, when we get the budget, our budget number was 23 something.
Certified enrollment is different than butts and seats. Remember, certified enrollment, we're counting all those kids that are open and rolled out, and we're sending the money with them. With this, we're counting kids that are sitting in our seats, so open and rolled-in kids are in here, these are not just resident kids, these are served enrollment here, which is what we, you know, we want to encourage kids to come back to our district so that this served number goes up. So, it's completely different than what certified enrollment is.
This is what we build for.
This is what we build for, is, is kids, and serving the kids that are here to go to school here in Oskaloos.
Have you given, maybe it was on here, the kids that were out last year, are coming back, maybe come back to our district?
That's not on here, but I do have that later. Again, because this is not certified enrollment, this is current enrollment, current served enrollment.
You send that to us?
Sure.
Sometime.
How many sheets do you want?
All of them.
Any questions about enrollment? Again, just a quick little learning and projections, and my projection is that we're going to hold pretty stable here for a while, or at least the next six years, barring any really small preschool classes.
Okay.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, she has, we've already voted to move to the 16th for our next thing, so I think we are to the part of closed session, so I'm looking for a motion from, correct?
I've got it right here. Branch off the press. I move that the board of directors of all schools in community school district hold a closed session to evaluate an individual whose performance is being considered as provided in Iowa Code Section 21.5 in concern to the individual's request.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? And this is a roll call vote as well.
Carl Brust?
Yes.
Eric Edgman?
Yes.
Shelly Hare?
Yes.
Amanda McGraw?
Yes.
Sherman Parlet?
Yes.
Lynette Screen?
Yes.
Greg Holson?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be going to closed session, so.
Is it, we were going to note the.
Well, why don't we, since the cameras are here, let's go to her office.
I'll have to email, it's not ready, it's not in PDF, so when I send it to them, I'll send it to you.
Just bring the food.
Bring the food, okay.